Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the July 16, 2019 Board of Selectmen's meeting. Could I have a roll call, please?
Let me see. Town Attorney Rich Bowen is here. Town Administrator Derek Sullivan. Selectmen Trappiano, Bruce, Manise, and Slavin are here. Absent is Selectman Titlebaum.
Thank you very much. Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Robideau, could you lead us in the presence of allegiance? Sort of like your last official thing.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. Announcements. Alan, please.
No, I'll wait till the comments section.
Okay. Jim? Okay. Mary?
None.
All right. So we'll go to recognition. All right. So tonight, we have a special night. Officer Richard Robideau is retired. I guess as of when? Couple days ago, right?
A week ago yesterday, sir.
A week ago yesterday. It was at like around noon time or something too, wasn't it? Kind of like the right time, yeah. So he's retired, and as such, we have a special proclamation that we're going to award. You want to read this, Mary, please?
I can.
We're going to read it, and then we'll do a little pictures and see if we can meet with everybody and...
All right. This is the proclamation, Richard Robideau Day. Whereas, Richard Robideau was first employed by the Town of Wareham Police Department as a summer special police officer in 1985 and 1986, whereas, Richard Robideau was hired as a full-time police officer in 1987. Whereas, Richard Robideau's service as a police officer was marked by his extreme dedication to his work as a police officer, including coming to the assistance of other police officers even when off-duty and offering even while on vacation to come back and help during public emergencies. Whereas, Richard Robideau's service as a police officer was also marked by his professional courteous and helpful approach to and interactions with the public. Whereas, Richard Robideau worked his last shift as a full-time police officer on July 8, 2019, and whereas, Richard Robideau was subsequently seen working a detail shift immediately following his last full-time shift of his 32-year career, indicating his continued devotion to the public safety of the town as a special police officer even in his so-called retirement. Therefore, in recognition of the above facts, the Board of Selectmen congratulate Police Officer Richard Robideau for his decades of exemplary service to the town and hereby proclaim July 16, 2019, as Richard Robideau Day. So proclaim the 16th day of July, 2019. Anna O'Donoghue. Signed, Patrick Trappiano, Chairman, Mary Bruce, Clerk, Alan Slavin, Peter Titlebaum, and Jim Manise.
Now, before we give you that, I'm going to give everybody a chance to say something. Alan might have something to say. We all have a... You know, I remember that one thing about Richard is that I drive around town, and you see police officers all over town, as everybody knows. But I see you all the time. Everywhere I went, I saw Richard. He was never hiding anywhere. That gentleman was working like you wouldn't believe. If it wasn't a detail, it was on your cruiser or whatever. Always saw you, always. And I know that you have a lot of respect to the men, and I want to thank you personally for spending your time with us. Thank you so much. Anybody else want to say anything?
We basically have had more than a few times where we've asked for the honor guard to come out for different events, and he's always been there first and foremost. I know you like riding motorcycles, so you're close to my heart. Thank you for everything.
Very nice. Anybody else?
I just wanted to say thanks for your service and wish you a happy retirement. Enjoyable. Thank you.
Likewise. Thank you.
We knew how important Officer Robideau was to the department when the chief was scheming on all sorts of different ways to keep him on board. So I wish we could have kept you longer. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Does he want to say anything?
Come on, officers around him. Come on, all those people. Everybody come around him. Mr. Robideau, you saved his life very much. Giving all your time to this community. Good morning, guys.
Trevor, do you know?
Come on in. And we'll kind of stick our heads in between. All you guys matter a lot. This is a show.
I did. Don't fall asleep. Also, it's okay.
I'm good. I'm pretty good.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Thank you very much. You want to say anything?
I guess I could real quickly just thank Chief Walsec, Mr. Sullivan, and the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Wareham. It was an honor and a pleasure to serve the town for the time I did. I will miss it. But I'll be around. If you haven't seen the last of me...
Seems like it's hard to really give enough to somebody who gives so much of their life to one place, you know? I mean, you give them a plaque, and out the door they go. And they deserve so much more. They certainly deserve our respect more than anything else. And that's really all we have to give, and I hope everybody out there gives it to them.
We'll get something else to do. We'll do something else.
All right. Anything else? No? You're good. Citizens' comments. Alan.
I'm not a citizen.
Come on down. I knew this was coming. It's just a matter of time.
She's got a list.
She's got a list.
It's been a while.
You didn't bring any trash, did you? Okay. And what's this? What are you, taking Alan's shirts?
Yes. This one of mine.
Okay. Sandy Slavin, and yes, he outgrows them, and I grow into them. So we continue to use them.
That's perfect. Okay. Go ahead.
I just want to thank everybody that helped and supported the 43rd Wareham Historical Society Antique Fair. We had a great outing, and we appreciate the support from the town on a major fundraiser for us. The second topic, I was wondering if the accident off of Hathaway, if the train whistles had been louder, maybe the person wouldn't have lost their leg. But I know they're trespassing and everything else like that. But there was a move to reduce the sound of the whistle, and I was just wondering if it had been louder, maybe they would have woken up and moved in time. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Not in this case.
They're pretty loud with those whistles.
In this case, the person who was hit was sleeping.
Was what?
Was either sleeping or had passed out.
Oh, yeah. Typically, I guess that's sort of what happens, unfortunately. Anybody else for citizens' comments? Okay. Awesome. Board comments. All right, Alan. You're up. Come on.
I'm up? Okay.
You're going to have to speak into that mic better, because I can barely hear you down here.
The mic. Hey, Bob, you want to turn it up a little bit? Too far, huh? Thank you. Oh, well. I'd like to do a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to thank the OBA. We had a car show on the 29th, and they stepped up. We had a... Not an issue, but basically, the host group that was going to sponsor the show backed away, and the OBA came in the last minute. We were able to have a very successful show, even though the weather was good in Wareham but terrible everywhere else around us. And then we also did another show for them this past Saturday over at the VFW. And we had just under 100 cars, and everybody really had a great time. It was really nice to see. It's nice to work with an organization that they have volunteers. They take care of everything. And we basically got there at 11 o'clock, smiled, put up a pop-up tent, and that was the work all we had to do. And everybody else took care of us, and I really do appreciate it. Another issue we have is GATRA. Frank Gay, who's a Wareham resident, is the director of GATRA, which is a local regional transportation company that works within the Wareham region. Probably seven, eight years ago, I started complaining at SERPED, which is a local regional group, about lack of transportation available for our residents in Wareham going west to the hospitals in Fairhaven, New Bedford, or even into Fall River, which a lot of people have to go to. Frank worked back and forth with myself and the organization, and we were finally able to get a bus service going basically from Wareham to New Bedford, which is the first of its type, because it basically transfers two regional transit areas, which has never happened before, because each one has their own union, et cetera. This bus has been running for two years plus now, and it's been very successful. It never would have happened without Frank. The other issue is, we've been talking, and Derek is our town administrator, has been involved quite a bit. I talked about it quite a long time ago, about having some kind of jitney-type service you see in Long Island for bus service in and around an area, which we thought would be ideal for ONSET, because ONSET was never designed for anything but people. It was never designed for cars. It was designed probably for a horse and buggy per house. Today, every 5,000-square-foot lot probably has three or four cars with it. There's insufficient parking. And if anybody was in ONSET this past Saturday, it probably took you an hour to two hours to find a parking space if you were lucky. The place was just completely maxed out. So we were able to use our two fields for people to park, and the bus service has been making that loop around. It's really been working well. I'm hoping that the numbers work out so Frank can continue to find funding for it. But I'd like to reach out to Frank Gay and also to Cat Jones at the OBA for stepping up to make this happen. Frank is going to be retiring probably sometime this year, and I'd like to bring him in when that time happens to thank him for what he's done for the town of Wareham. That's all I have for today. I'm done to you.
Thank you, Alan.
It's okay. It was a very nice, quiet two weeks. Yes.
Yeah. Today, I met with some members of CORE, Citizens Organization for Recreation, over an onset. They're really looking at the whole town, and it's just not onset. Still be some progress being made over there in the tennis courts, and the cracks are being cut out, and some binder being put in there. And I think Mr. Sullivan awarded quite a bit... Well, the town voted for it, but he approved quite a bit of money to be put into that. So that's moving forward. Walked around, you know, listened to their ideas and what they're doing. And they've been working with Mr. Sullivan on that, and also went down to Lopes Field and looked at what was going on there and some of their ideas. So it's good getting out, talking with them. They're a good organization. They're trying to move the town forward in a positive way. They do fundraising. They've raised quite a bit of money, but they're going to put towards improvements down to Lopes Field. They're willing to do that, and it's a large sum. So that was a good... It was a good morning, and I appreciated them getting in touch with me. Thank you.
Just to piggyback on that, Jim, they need, I think, about $2,500 for the pickleball nets, because they'd asked for... The original price estimate for the courts and the tennis courts and basketball court was $30,000. And then when we finally got all the information, it was closer to $50,000, which is what we brought to town meeting. However, they still need nets, and they've asked me to come up with those funds. I believe they said you've got to have a miscellaneous count somewhere, but...
And in the fencing around the perimeter of those things, it really needs an improvement.
Yeah.
Looking at the school there, that needs a facelift.
Yeah.
Paint job. You know, it's right there in the public view. So when people come to see, if they see the peeling paint and stuff, that's the perception they get. And then the rusty fence, which is pulling off of the, you know, the standards and the supports. But I'm glad you brought that up, and you're saying that you might need some... You might need some money in order to complete the project as far as the use of it.
So I'm hoping, because the next time I can pull money out is in October.
So would...
We have some dedicated folks in the community that'd like to help out and maybe do a donation or...
What is donation for?
Yep. For those.
Okay.
It would be really great.
I'm sure they're watching.
Yep. I'm sure they're all reaching for their wallets right now.
They're doing all right. Thank you.
Sorry. I turned it off. All right. Appointment of a tax title custodian for the July 24th. We do this every time we have an auction. We point Derek as the tax title custodian for the auction. This is... There's two properties, 47 12th Street and 0 Charlotte Furness Road, which is a land parcel.
Okay. You want to motion?
I do.
Okay. I move that we appoint Derek Sullivan as the tax title custodian for the July 24th auction.
Second.
Second. Motion made by Mary, seconded by Alan. Any discussion?
I'd just like to know, do you set minimums on the properties?
We will on them. I don't have it in front of me, but there will be a minimum set down for...
Both of them?
Each one, yeah. For both. And what the position of the tax title custodian is, we could get... We could get bids on these, and if we determine that they're not high enough, we can turn them down.
All right. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, unanimous, 4-0-0. Okay. Appointments.
Okay. First up, we have William Smith. He is up for reappointment to the Conservation Commission.
Okay. That's your motion?
Sure.
Okay. Motion made by Mary, seconded by Alan. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 4-0-0.
Okay. Next up, I move that we reappoint Julio Roderick to the Wareham Veterans Council for a term to expire no later than June 30, 2022.
Okay. Motion made by Mary, seconded by Alan. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous.
Okay. I move that we reappoint Wendy Brogioli to the Wareham Cultural Council for a term to expire no later than June 30, 2021.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by... Hello? By Alan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, unanimous, 4-0-0.
And I move that we appoint Lawrence Perry as an associate member to the Board of Health for a term to expire no later than June 30, 2020.
I got it.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Jim. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. All right. Thank you very much. Moving on. Renewal of second-hand dealer license. ONSET Emporium.
Yes. It looks like we have everything in order here. There are a few different dates, and I just had a question on...
No, that's fine. That's fine.
Okay. So I move that we renew the second-hand dealer's license for the ONSET Emporium.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Alan. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, unanimous, 4-0-0.
All right.
Two liquor licenses.
Yep. Next up, Steve, are you coming? Are you going to speak to us, or you're here, so...
Yeah. I want everybody to know that the application for Steve Curry for two liquor licenses, it should have said as the manager of the Redmond. It doesn't matter, because the licenses are really in the control of the manager anyway. So, and the paperwork, by the way, is correct. I want everybody to understand the paperwork is correct. Okay? You have anything you want to say?
Just that the two liquor licenses we're applying for. The first one on August 4th is for our annual clam bake. We call that every year. And if anyone's interested, it's $40 a ticket. All the steamers you can eat, plus all the fixings that go with it. Rain or shine, so if it's raining, you're still going to have to eat. And the second one is for a family party, a family reunion. They're basically will be indoors and outdoors as the barbecue, so we just want to make sure everything's legal and covered under the statutes.
All right.
What are we cooking?
Could you make a motion?
What are we cooking in the family barbecue?
It's the family barbecue. They take care of their own stuff.
You can't go to that one, Alan.
No.
Look at it. We're all talking about eating here.
All right. I move that we approve the two one-day liquor licenses to be held Sunday, August 4, 2019, 10:30 a.m. to 4 p.m. And Sunday, August 11, 2019, from 12 noon to 5 p.m.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Alan. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Thank you so much. The next is an application from Paul Rose of Dudley Brown VFW for two one-day liquor licenses to be held on Saturday, July 27, 2019, from 12 to 6, and Saturday, August 3, from 1 to 6. Look at indemnification agreement. All right. They've got to correct that. We can't correct that.
Okay.
Okay? So what we'll do is we'll make it subject to them making this correction. Because they got to write this in. This is their indemnification to us, so we don't want to play with it, okay? So, but you can make the motion subject to they correcting the paper, that piece of paperwork.
Okay. We just have... There's just one form that needs to be filled out, so this will be approved as soon as it's... Unless you want to do it now.
Yeah. There just has to be a correction made.
Just one little part.
You can do it afterwards in the office. When it's there, you can go in, and she'll give it to you after you make the correction, okay? You just got to fill in some information.
Want to say anything?
No. Julio's not yet.
Yeah. Let him do it in the office.
Okay. Okay. We have... Wait a minute. Where's my agenda? Okay. I move that we approve the two-day liquor license to be held Saturday, July 24...
Pavilion, right?
2019, from 12 noon to 6 p.m. And Saturday, August 3, from 1 to 6 p.m.
And that's in the pavilion at Dudley Brown?
Yes. Pending the two corrections that need to be done.
Correct. All right. Any... Motion made by Mary, seconded by Alan. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, unanimous, 4-0-0. Thank you so much. Request from the Cape Verdean Festival Association of the Use of Town Property for the Cape Verdean Festival to be held Saturday, August 10. Does it... What is the town property they want to use? Which is at least... It's on the sheet, I'm sure.
Parking?
Come on down.
The Panchelle, Lopes, and Hines.
Okay.
It's at Panchelle. Yep.
All the paperwork there?
Uh...
All the sign-offs. I'm pretty sure it is.
Yes, it is.
Yeah. It's the same thing you do every year.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. Got anything you want to talk about it? Say anything?
Nope.
You're here, so...
No. You don't really...
I'm happy.
That's one of those events that doesn't have to be advertised. Everybody seems to show up, so it's great.
Yes.
Okay. So I move that we approve the request from the Cape Verdean Festival Association for the use of town property for the Cape Verdean Festival to be held Saturday, August 10, 2019. Rain date, Sunday, August 11, 2019.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Alan. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, unanimous. Thank you, sir. You can pick them up in the office.
And the corrections that need to be made? I can just have my brother...
Yeah. Just when you go in, she'll...
Yeah.
When she goes in, she'll show you. You just got to write in a couple of things. We can't write stuff on the application for you. You have to do it yourself.
Okay.
Okay?
Selectmen's office, right?
Yes. Please.
Thank you.
Just give her a little time in the morning and stuff. Don't rush in there right away. Give them until afternoon or something, okay? Because they got a lot of stuff to do when they get it back. All right. Next up is Town Business. There's a Chapter 61A Land Conversion Map, 106 Lot L1. And I believe we got back from everybody that nobody had any use for this property. Did... Is that correct, Mr. Town Administrator?
Yes. I believe that's where that new solar arrays from makepeace are going, so...
Right.
That's going to be a good... It's going to be good revenue to the community, so...
Okay.
I'd say don't disrupt it.
So what we're going to do is we're going to move to not exercise our 61A rights, okay? Please. On map 106 Lot L1.
All right. Say that again. Was that a motion?
Right. We're not going to exercise our rights under 61A.
Okay. So I move that we do not exercise our...
Our rights under 61A.
61A.
On lots 106 and... Map 106 Lot L1.
Map 106 Lot L1.
Okay. Motion made by Mary, seconded by Alan. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Thank you. All right. Update from the Conservation Commission. I don't see them here. Did you get a notification? Did you? You want to come down?
Yeah. Jim's here.[1523.17]
Oh, there's two of you. Come on down. Come on down. I saw, I knew you were here, but I didn't, I didn't realize, uh-
He's, he's the person who's disappointed, again.
Come on down. Grab a chair.
What?
Still wearing my shirt.
So, you know what the purpose of these is to tell us how we can help you, what you're doing, what you need, that kind of stuff.
Uh, to introduce myself, I'm Sandy Slaven. I am the Chair of Conservation Commission.
My name is Jim Smith. I'm a member of the commission.
Okay.
We are a commission of seven people and three associates who have the responsibility of adhering to the town wetland bylaws for all land associated and putting wetlands on water bodies in the town of Wareham. We meet the, um, first and third Wednesdays at 7:00 in this room and for public hearings and discussions regarding our wetlands. Right now, we are down a person, so we are only a board of six and should be seven. We do not have any associates, so I'm putting a plea out there for anybody who might be interested in looking after our wetlands to come join us on Wednesdays, the first and third Wednesdays at 7:00, to hear what we say and do and then apply for, um, um, membership. Membership? Yeah. To be appointed to our particular board.
Okay, let me ask you a question. What have been the biggest challenges of your board?
People who do things without being permitted.
That's the biggest challenge?
That is our biggest challenge.
So enforcement is an issue for you guys?
Hopefully, people will step up and say, hey, they're cutting the, uh, eel grass. They're cutting, uh, down to their water's edge. They're losing, using a tremendous amount of nitrogen on their very green, green lawn going down to the water. So it's, it's, enforcement is the tough one. I mean, most people understand our bylaws and understand when we can and cannot permit certain projects, but it's the people who violate the bylaws that are tough. We try to find them. Someone usually drops a dime, someone, one of our committee might see something and we bring it to the board and it's discussed and we ask them to, um, correct what they tore down.
Well, I believe Derek has put a, put together a new enforcement, uh, group, in fact, to start to exercise some of this enforcement, so that might be some help for you.
I'm not aware of it. What is it?
Well, he's, go ahead. You want to fill them in, Derek, about what you've, uh, what you set up?
Yeah, we've done a bi-weekly code enforcement meeting with the new Director of Inspectual Services, Board of Health, uh, and some of the other players, so we can bring conservation into the, and Attorney Bowen has been there for them as well. It's not for you to show up, Sandy. We can have, uh, Mr. Pichette, so.
But several years ago, we were, conservation was having an issue in which building permits were being issued without conservation reviewing it or approving it, and therefore work had been done in wetlands. And in the last three years, that has improved immensely, the communication between the building inspector and code enforcement and Mr. Pichette, our, our agent. So we are working very hard to, um-
And I'm sorry, I just spaced out. We've also have, uh, Mr. Campina's there in both the fire districts as well, where are at the meeting. We really appreciate all their help as well, because they're a big part of the team and Wareham PD as well is at those meetings.
So, see, so they're going to meet every other week. Is that right? Go ahead.
Yeah, bi-weekly, yeah.
Go ahead, Rich. Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, we had a very nice meeting, uh, last Thursday, and the great thing about it was, is that you had all the town-wide code enforcement people gathered up in one room. And so there was a list of particular projects that were, not projects, uh, problems that were being discussed, and it was an opportunity for each person to put their problem into the hat and for every code enforcement person in the town to contribute their viewpoint as to what their particular agency or board could do to solve the problem. So, uh, certainly with Mr. Pichette attending, he would have input and would have the ability to hear what other people were doing and contribute.
Yeah, and it might shock you to know if somebody's a scofflaw on one thing, sometimes they're scofflaw for maybe environmental as, as well.
Really? Really? Whoa.
It's a shocker.
A couple of weeks ago, someone sent me a Facebook posting of this land owner who was enjoying his view off of Wee Wee Antic. His whole coastal bank was mowed down and that high tide is covered with water. So here is somebody who posted and bragged about how he had this great view of his water. You could see the mow marks on his, uh, beach grass.
He snitched on himself?
He snitched on himself and someone noticed it and brought it to my attention, I think, that person, and has been brought to Mr. Pichette's attention to go down and look at the site. But we have found various violations. Someone cleared the bank from their home down at Cedar Point because they wanted to see the waves break. It has been totally replanted. I mean, you just can't do that. And, um, so we have every once in a while someone say, well, I didn't know I couldn't do that and whatever, and we say, well, here's a fine, undo what you did and move forward.
Well, you know, I want you to- I want you to know that code enforcement is a serious issue for us. Uh, you know, we had a lot of other issues we worked on the last bunch of years with, uh, you know, finances and so on, and now that we've kind of got those things moving in the right direction, code enforcement has become a major part of this. And, uh, just so you know, uh, we have people out there that are violating regulation all the time, and I mean seriously violating them and scoffing at us because we've never enforced the, the regulations we have. Well, that's not going to happen anymore, so I think everybody out there should understand, these guys are going to be serious, they're going to take, take this seriously, and they're going to start enforcing all these regulations. And I think you're going to see a, a whole different, a different attitude around here.
We had one project that, um, engineer, um, builder, homeowner came before as we approved the project, and they didn't build to the engineering plan. They've been told they have to undo and build to plan.
Yeah.
And they've, we've responded to us that it will be done in six months. So, I mean, this, they agreed to undo what they did wrong.
Well, not to rat on myself, but recently I installed a system, I, you know, I do septic work, and I installed a system, and when I was converting the calculation, I put it in the wrong spot. Well, unfortunately, this has wetlands surrounding it and it can only go in this one spot, so I had to dig it out all by hand and move it because it was the right thing to do. You know, this is what, this has to happen.
Did we have that hearing?
Excuse me?
Did we have that hearing?
It wasn't in Wareham, it was far, far away.
It was, yeah. But the point is that sometimes that has to happen.
Yes.
You have to go and fix things and do what the right, and I think it's time that we make things happen around here as well. You had something you wanted to say?
Well, just very briefly, Mr. Chairman, uh- May I mention one thing? What we're running into occasionally is people who did things 15 years ago, and they did them and never got a certificate of compliance.
Right.
So now they want to sell their property, and the buyers are realizing we need a certificate of compliance. So now they have to come back to us, present some work that was done-
Right.
-without any approval, and it gets to be kind of touchy.
Gets very sensitive then.
Mr. Bowen?
Counsel, I, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Could you, you had something?
No.
All right, okay.
Please. No, Mr. Bowen, please.
No, he's good. All right, does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, if you don't mind. Um, just so I understand it, now if there's a complaint made, if there's a complaint made, uh, related to the, the conservation bylaws, it's, it's up to the, whoever reports it, and then the conservation agent, Mr. Pichette, to bring that in front of the conservation board in order to decide what actions they want to take about the issue that's been brought to the conservation agent. Is that correct or incorrect, either through to you, through you, to Attorney Bowen or Mrs. Slaven?
I don't quite understand the question.
What was the question again?
The question is-
I was having trouble, Jim, I was having trouble hearing you.
You get it? He's got it. Hold it.
Did you get the question?
Yeah, yes, yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, well, in the first instance, what would happen is, uh, Mr. Pichette would investigate a complaint. Um, if he found that there was a basis for it, he'd issue the appropriate sanction. Typically, that would involve coming back to the commission for an order of conditions. Uh, and then if, after all of that, uh, there was no compliance, at that point, it might involve a trip to district court for appropriate judicial intervention. And just a dovetail, and this segues into the point I was going to make a little bit earlier. The task force has already identified a couple of folks that we are probably going to end up not taking to district court, but taking to Superior Court, uh, for probably an injunction and some pretty harsh actions. So, just, I think a good thing for people to hear and be aware of.
So this is, this is good. We're moving in the right direction.
Really?
Does anybody else have any questions? Go ahead, Alan.
In conjunction with that also is, uh, people keep forgetting that we did pass on our zoning bylaws, I think it was 40U, which allows us to find per offense every day up to whatever the maximum is and continue to find them until it's corrected. And we don't have to go to, you know, local court and deal with a magistrate or whatever, who usually does nothing.
Right, it goes to Derek's hearing office.
We were able to actually put it right on the tax bill, and that becomes a lot more draconian.
Yeah.
We have a lot more tools than we've had before.
Yeah, I noticed that some signs had snuck up back in town that we told them to get out of here last year, and they're back again, and the, the telephone calls already been made and they've already been instructed to move them, and they're going to start locating their things and charging them every day for, uh, as long as they exist until they get rid of them. So-
I got a letter from one of them, email apologizing for putting the sign up and taking it down.
Okay, anybody else? Thank you. I appreciate you coming in.
We have several openings, first and third Wednesdays at 7:00 in this room. Come listen to us and see if you'd like to join us. We are looking for people who are willing to listen to hearings and to enforce our bylaws. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, vote to accept the donation of a boat, motor, trailer, floating dock for Natural Resources Department. This is an anonymous donation. Hello?
Hi, good evening.
So, I know that the gentleman wants to be anonymous, but maybe you can, you know-
He's not looking for a lot of, uh, recognition, I guess, a better way to put it. He's, he's a, he's a quiet individual. He felt that, um, he wanted to provide our department with this vessel, um, and he, he has no longer any use for it, uh, and, um, he felt that this was the best approach as opposed to selling it, as opposed to going elsewhere. He's, uh, uh, he's an active member of the town. He's a summer resident. Um, we've had no issues with the gentleman, um, on boating, no offenses, no, um, um, no dealings at all. He's got an active mooring in town, uh, which was, was assigned to this boat, and, um, I, I think he had it up for sale for a little while, and it wasn't moving as fast as he wanted it to, and he's decided this was it. And, um, I'm, I'm extremely grateful for it. Um, he was, he approached Officer McIntosh about it and, uh, and was extremely excited about it, and, uh, we, we pursued it from there, so.
Awesome.
Um, it's a, it's a 15-foot, 2012, uh, rigid hull inflatable. It's a, it's a, the, the actual make is called a brig. Uh, it's a really high-end Zodiac-style vessel. It comes with a 50 horsepower engine. Everything is 2012, the motor, the engine, the boat. Uh, it also has a floating dock, which the boat drives up onto to keep it out of the water, so, uh, it doesn't have any growth issues. Um, we confirmed that the vessel was, uh, continuously maintained by a local marina. Um, it, it's, and it's essentially turnkey, with the exception of us getting it ready for, you know, we'll put lettering and stuff on it, so, uh, it's, I'm just, I, I'm extremely grateful, uh, to the, the general, from the generosity of this gentleman. Uh, and I, it'll be, uh, well-served, this, a vessel like this for us in the ponds, uh, for some of the incidents that we have gone to, the stability to, the stability that a rigid hull provides for us. Um, you have a boat that's drifting, towing, anything like that, you, you're not in fear of scratching the boat, you can bump into it, you, you can do a lot with this. It's a small boat, it's very functional, so, um, it's, uh, it's just brought before the board and see what you'd like to do.
Well, I hope he's watching and he takes my thank you, at least, and I'm sure the rest of the board as well.
Oh, yeah. Appreciate his generosity.
Very unbelievable. I really just-
All right, could I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, first, it's, obviously, it's a, it's an amazing donation. We really appreciate it, but I also think it speaks volume about Director Buckminster and, you know, Officer McIntosh and the, the whole staff, where they'd be willing to come forward, that they engage with the boating community, they work with them, so I think it's a kudos to you and your team as well, so, thank you.
I can't ask for a better staff. I cannot, I, I can't even explain how great everybody is that works with us. I just, um, I'm speechless, so.
You're going to make me cry.
Sorry. No. So, thank you.
All right, can we have a motion?
Okay, I make a motion that we, um, vote to accept the donation of the boat, motor, trailer and floating dock for the Natural Resources Department.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Alan. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, unanimous, 400. Thank you so much.
Very much.
See you tomorrow night.
All right, next.
All right, next up, all right. All right, so this next one is, I, we talked about this whole sign request thing, uh, a few weeks ago, and I want to create a policy, it'll be 19-01. I haven't put the policy totally together yet, but I want to enact it and allow council to, uh, to build the policy, to put into the book, and then we'll ratify it afterwards. But, uh, we get a lot of requests for signs, as you know, on town property. They're really benign kinds of things. Uh, if there's anything unusual, of course, we'll still bring it to the board if there's something weird. Um, I had somebody, uh, the dog park wanting to put a sign up in front of their place, "Future Home of the Dog Park," but I think that's an acceptable thing anyway, and it actually falls under Derek's purview anyway, because it's still town property, as I understand it, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Huh? Yes. They want to put a sign that says "Future Home of the Dog Park." I think that's acceptable, but you'll have to talk to them about it.
Yeah, they have a license for it.
So there you go. So they have a license, so I guess that's an acceptable sign. But as far as the regular signs we get, you know, from the various charities and so on, remember, we don't do any commercial signs anyway. Uh, so what I would like to do is make a motion to establish policy 1901, that the chairman and or clerk can approve the sign requests, so they won't have to keep bringing them in here, because typically they come in, believe it or not, with not enough time. So if somebody wants to make that motion and then allow, go ahead.
I mentioned before, um, the only issue we have with this, we have in our zoning bylaws and our regular bylaws refers to who enforces this. So if we do a policy, we're going to have to refer back to, I believe, at least the zoning bylaw and the regular bylaw, because I don't believe a selectman's policy can supersede an existing zoning or a regular bylaw. I would ask town council to weigh in on that.
Well, council will work it out, right? Yeah.
Selectmen Slavens write policy will not supersede bylaw, uh, general bylaws or zoning bylaws, so I'll just have to look at those and figure out where we can maneuver.
It's not going to be a problem, we just have to-
We're just going to try to, however we can make it work. I just need him to be able to do that, so. All right?
Yep.
Anybody else?
I would, um, I'm, I'm not against it. I'd like to see, um, what Attorney Bowen puts together and, and the proposal in, in complete form before we vote to approve, but I'm not against the idea. And I, I was talking earlier with, um, Selectman Bruce, and, um, you know, could Inspectual Services sign off on some of that? And also, you made a new, you made a new form for, I guess it was generated around May 8th, for the application-
We did.
For non, not-for-profits to put in for permission. Um, should probably put a line in there, which, other locations, because you have location ABC. Because there's a lot of places where we may not, whoever puts it together may not have thought that the organizations who are requesting it might want to use it.
There's not like that on there?
Actually, what happens is-
We can add that to it.
The applications, the applications that come into us actually do, they hand right in below what's listed, those areas. The, the bylaw itself is pretty, I mean, is extremely explicit where and what you can do. So when the application comes in, normally to the office, they'll write in if there's anything else that's listed that, there's no way on that form to put all the locations.
It's a new one?
Yeah. Because the problem is-
No, that's what I'm saying.
But the problem is, it could be as many as 50 different locations, technically.
Well, they can write on the back, too. I mean, you know-
What other requested locations, that's all.
They just, they normally, they're allowed to write it in.
Yeah, okay.
It's not really an issue.
All right, they can put it on the back or there or something.
I think if you want-
They can print, uh-
If you want, for now, I would make a motion that we ask town council, go ahead and put something together, come back and vote to vote on it.
Okay.
Just because we want to make sure, whatever we do, doesn't come back and bite us.
Motion made by Alan and seconded by Jim. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous.
Uh, just, also, just everybody understands, 1901 means the year 2019 and the first selectman's policy in 2019.
Correct.
That's how that came up.
Oh, I didn't know that.
It's the first one in 19, in, in 2019. Discussion of Swiss Beach Road and Road 6 intersection. Alan, this is your baby.
Okay, I'll try and do this very quickly. Um, myself, John Walczek, our acting chief of police, and, uh, House Representative Susan Williams Gifford went up to Mass DOT District 5's office. Uh, we sat down, had a meeting with three engineers, uh, from District 5, and they started going through the SERPED, uh, study that I had requested back, I think in 2017, which had to do with the speed on the road, turns, accidents, et cetera. After the report was done, uh, it went basically into, um, the office there and also was forwarded to Boston. It had come back that we didn't qualify for a traffic light there under what the information was. Uh, Susan also, uh, probably less than three or four months ago contacted, uh, Mass DOT also, asking the same question, because some residents were still complaining about that intersection. She got the same answer that I got. Um, Chief Walczek, um, cotton, basically reached out less than a month ago and also got the same answer. So we're sitting, and I don't have the woman's name in front of me here, was going through, uh, this, the study, et cetera, going through it and said, why didn't you go ahead and apply for, uh, a, a traffic, you know, actual traffic light, et cetera? And he said, well, we were all told the answer was no.
Right.
She said, you, it's clear you guys qualify.
So-
We went and said-
Do you need a vote from us or something?
No, what it is, is at this point, we were just really confused because three of us got the same answer. And then Mass DOT came back and said, these, this study shows you qualify for this, you know, et cetera. So they were going back to Boston, I should hear the end of this week, to see if, because it gets reviewed in Boston. If Boston came up with something that they, the, the district didn't know about, we'll find out, but basically, we'll go ahead and apply for actual process. The problem I have is that the process could take as much as three years to get done.
How long, three years?
Three years, which is, which really kills me, because if we had done it in 2017, before this year was out, we would have a traffic light there, et cetera.
Well, but you know, the sooner it happens, you got to get going with it, I guess.
So, we're going to go through with it, but I just want everybody to know that we had tried, we were told no, now we're told yes, and, uh, we, three of us kind of walked out, you know, sitting there with our hands up, and they're saying, you know, we, we don't understand. The bottom line is, is we've taken a long time, but, you know, we kept with it, and I thank everybody for persevering with us, and we have an okay to go, move forward now. So, it will happen.
Can I, can I ask, um- Can I, can I ask, who is the applicant for that? And do you need a vote in order to authorize the application for the...
It's the state.
The state, yeah.
The state road, so we don't...
So we're not doing the request?
No, it's all state, it's a state road.
Basically, you can apply to the state, saying, here's a study done, we'd like to see a traffic light here. The state has to do all of it, because it's a state road, Wareham has no...
Who was the discussion for environmental issue?
Does the town, does the board of the selectmen, or does the town...
Discussion for environmental issue, what the hell was that?
Administrator?
I don't even know where that came in.
Put the request in officially?
No, we'll have to see what form comes back.
Discussion of environmental issues?
So we need permission to apply?
They can't hear you, Chris.
So we need a permission to apply?
No, it's a request.
So...
And the study was done for the town, and that, that study is what they used to work with.
So who puts in the request?
It will basically go from Mass DOT District 5.
Okay, thank you.
That's it?
Yeah.
That's left in there?
Yep. I have nothing for the environmental issue.
Well, the next one says, discussion regarding environmental issue, I don't know what the hell it is.
Me neither.
I didn't put it on.
I didn't.
I don't know how it got in there, okay. We'll move on for that for now. Any other town business, huh?
It's an issue.
It's an issue. And no, no, any other town business not reasonably anticipated in the last 48 hours prior to posting of the minutes? Anybody?
No, sir.
Oh, okay. Town administrators' report, please.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much, I'm happy to be back. Spent some nice time away with the family, and my kids are still up with the in-laws, and it's, it's a different world, I'll tell ya.
It's like being not, not, no children again.
Just gonna go over the new, the new code enforcement team, but again, they're doing a fantastic job. And I'm so thankful for the districts being a part of that. They've always worked well with the town, you know, with the onset fire districts and such, the Wareham Fire District. And so it's good just that people understand how hard they've been working together with us.
Is the code enforcement officer involved in that, or is it just the...
Both of them.
Both, okay.
Yeah. So, so I can't manufacture anything for you for the, with the last two weeks, so have a great night.
Alright, liaison reports, Alan, please.
First off, we've had, I have to thank Mr. Sullivan and Judy, the town accountant. We had an issue with the Veterans Council and with the Friends of the Veterans, you know, resolving basically a bill for flags and stuff. Been sitting in the middle, which is not a very nice place to be, trying to resolve the issue back and forth, because one is a town committee, and the other one is a fully independent group. Thankfully, Mr. Sullivan sat down with the town accountant and came up with a resolution. So the issue is taken care of, and we can move forward, and the two groups can sit down and figure out how they can work together peacefully. That's number one. On the 30th, I want to remind everybody, we have a discussion on electronic voting. Turning Technologies will be, I think, remotely participating here. And there'll be a presentation, which was, we have downloaded, and it'll be up on the screen. And the gentleman will be talking to us remotely on this as well. I believe you have it scheduled for the 30th as of right now. As far as anything happening internally, as far as the state on marijuana, et cetera, everything is kind of on a little hiatus through July. A lot of different groups and committees don't meet in August. So basically, things will start moving in September again. So I will basically advise people about social clubs, marijuana delivery, hopefully with the next 60 days max. This new zoning bylaw that's percolating through the state, which, if it does get passed through, we'll take, what we have, the two-thirds majority on a lot of zoning is gonna go to a simple majority, it's been proposed to make life a lot easier.
Right.
There is a lot of recyclable and trash-type bills sitting, going along. There's plastic bag bands that's up there, miniatures, et cetera. So there's a lot of things happening, whether they'll get to the end and actually get voted on by the House and Senate in Massachusetts, is hard to say. But there is, there is, everything is up for grabs right now. That's it for me.
Jim?
Just a question related to some of the boards in general. I know, going through bylaws or policies, it talks about training for boards and requirement for certain boards to have a mandatory training, updating on changes in the laws, in ethics and whatnot. And I think Attorney Bowen does some of them, and some of them may be offered by groups within the Commonwealth. So I was just wondering what the board's position is on that, and if, when was the last time we've done that? Might be a good idea to move forward with imposing that again, so that, you know, we keep people up to date and abreast with the laws.
Ethics trainings, everybody has to take as soon as they get on.
Correct.
They have to go online and take the ethics training, that's automatic. And Rich does, I think last year you did some, Rich, right? Didn't you do a couple of classes last year, I think you did?
With your permission, sir. Yeah, usually do them in September, to get a jump on the busy season. What I would have in mind for the September would be both open meeting law and conflict of interest. They just never go out of style, so...
Correct, correct. And you had your hand up.
Go ahead, Alan.
Just so, Jim is still new, so there's a lot of things that he hasn't run into yet. The bottom line is that Finance Committee, there is courses available that they're supposed to take, that the town provides, or actually done through MMA. All three licensing boards, from September through December, there are courses that are basically available all during, all that timeframe, in all different areas of the state. I know, when I was on the planning board, I probably did somewhere around 15 courses over three years.
Right.
And I got certified under the ACIP. These are all available, there are other things, again, available for Mass Municipal Association, for training, et cetera. It's in our policy, which nobody reads anymore, 8810, which says we are supposed to promote and educate our employees wherever possible. And we have, and we have everything in place for that.
Well, we could send out a reminder to all the boards if you want. I don't mind sending that out to everybody to remind them that they have continuing education requirements, and it would, they can get, we'll list where they can go and what they have. And we'll mention that Rich will be doing some in September and stuff like that, we can do that.
It's our responsibility, actually.
Yeah, let's do that, we'll do that. Yeah, sure, we'll do that.
You know, and I, and I know it's difficult to get people on boards.
Yeah.
So I'm not looking to drive people away.
Yeah, exactly.
Especially people in their first year who might need some more of the...
That's the thing you have to be careful for, there are volunteers, so you wanna make sure we don't push them away.
But we want them to be qualified and knowledgeable.
Okay.
Patrick?
Yeah, go ahead, Rich.
You know, and just for Jim, but one thing we, that I've done in the past is call it a day-night doubleheader. So, you know, some people are available during the day, and they can come in and do it, and then do one in the evening for the people who are at work. So, everybody gets a shot at it.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Alright, so we'll do that, I just mentioned it, and they'll take it off the tape, and we'll get that done, okay?
And, you know, just wanna let you know that on Friday, I'm going down to the new Zero Waste Management to see it in full operation, as part of my responsibilities to being on the recycling, or the regional district, refuse district, just to check it out, see how they're doing, because we're gonna be making decisions upcoming on changes, and which, which facilities will be operational, and possible changes, and so, there's a bit going on. It's, and we, of course, I keep, I keep in touch with Mr. Sullivan on this, so he knows what's going on, too, for the towns' sake.
Okay, anything else, that's it, Mary?
Yep.
Alright, you were away, too.
Yep.
Alright, yeah, that seems, the vacation season gets a little thin for these things, because we're all trying to take some time off. But okay, so, let's go on to the consent agenda, please, there's some bills, I believe.
Yep, we've got some bills.
Rich wants to get paid, he, he, he's been partying big time, so he needs to get his money. Which he never gets, by the way. Okay, you wanna make a motion?
I make a motion that we authorize a payment to the law office of Richard P. Bowen.
Okay, do I hear a second? Motion made by Mary, seconded by Alan, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Alright, and then we have two sets of minutes?
Yes.
They're regular minutes?
They are both regular minutes, yes, and we have some changes to them, they're just like little typo things that we went through, so I would...
With the corrections?
Yep, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes from June 18th, 2019, and June 25th, 2019, with some...
Scribner corrections, right?
Scribner corrections, yes.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Alan, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye, opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Okay, I want to remind the board next week, next, the 30th, is a busy meeting. We meet at 6 o'clock, there are three items to be discussed in executive session. One about the makepeace issue with the bridge, with the dam, rather. There is a contract negotiation coming up, and we're also gonna talk about the structure of, the structure of executive sessions in that meeting as well, okay? So, yeah, go ahead.
Can we discuss the...
Yeah, it's on there, the land...
The general removal?
Yes, it's up there, it's on there. That's on there as well, I should have mentioned that, it's on there as well.
Alright, 6 o'clock.
So, we'll be, so it'll be a busy night, and it'll be the 30th, so it's kinda like, we gotta open the town meeting, and all that kinda stuff. And we'll have that other thing going on, so be prepared, you know, we're out of here, probably 8 o'clock tonight. We probably won't get out of here that, we'll probably, if we get out of here by 9, we'll be lucky. Okay, it's gonna be a long meeting. But this is the thing that happens when you skip every other meeting like that, it just is what it is. But, I think everybody must appreciate having some time off during the summer, so... Alright.
This is just for the summer?
Yes, September, man, we're back at it, back at the grindstone. Alright, alright, that's, that's it. A motion to adjourn would be acceptable. Motion from Alan to adjourn, seconded by Mary, all in favor, say aye, opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Thank you so much, Wareham, have a great week, two weeks.